I'd like to call a regular meeting of October seventeenth, twenty twenty four for the planning commission for the city of Buellton. We all stand for the pleasurable legends.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with every being and everything.
Role call.
Chairman Mercado.
Here.
Vice Chair Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Contreras.
Here.
Commissioner Sakiya.
Here.
We have no reordering of agenda, no presentations, and so we'll go to approval by the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting of September fifth, twenty twenty four. We have a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have no public comments and no consent calendar. And we will go directly to new public hearings. We'll start off with resolution number twenty four zero five. A resolution of the planning commission of the city of Buellton, California recommending city approval of a development plan modification, twenty four dash DPM zero one. The final development plan, twenty one dash FDP zero five for the five eighteen mixed-use project located at five eighteen Avenue of Flags on Assessors parcel number one three seven dash one seven zero dash zero zero six and making findings and support out. Irma.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Mercado. And just want to make sure that how would I not speaking into the mic here? Um, thank you for the introduction of the project. Um, as was stated, this is a an application for development plan modification. Um, requesting changes to the previously approved five eighteen mixed-use project, also referred to as the five eighteen um in the Avenue of Flags specific plan area. Uh, prior approvals on this project um were from back in uh twenty twenty two. They consisted of a final development plan. Um, as that included, um, well, actually a final development plan, which went through planning commission and uh through city council. Um, at the city council level, there were um terms uh as part of the development opportunity reserve that were granted as part of incentives um for the project. And there was also at the city council level and associated um development agreement um that kind of um memorialized the terms of the D O R and also the project itself. And so tonight, um, this um matter before the planning commission is a um modification to the final development plan, and it consists of a recommendation to city council because um we'd be going through the same process back through city council for the development plan modification. Um, taking another look at the D O R and um revisions to the development agreement. And with that, I would just like to briefly introduce the project itself, and we can go to the next slide, slide, please. The five eighteen project, which is on the left side of um the corner in the street that we're looking down is Second Street and the Creekside Village Project, which is on um four eighty Avenue Flags. So these are were entitled at two separate times, um had in different entitlement packages, different, you know, approvals and but similar. They were both final development plans, um had D O R terms and um development agreements. Uh, the applicant for both of those was um Brandon Mann, who's here in the um audience tonight. Um, and what um he is bringing back is now modification to both of these plans. Both of the approved projects, and they are proposing to build these and are viewing them really as one larger development. Because they're complementary projects, and they were designed as complementary projects. Um, so the I just wanted to introduce that because I'm going to be going through virtually the same presentation on both projects and try and keep it as brief as possible. Um, there's a lot of material to cover, but the street scene at the top is the approved street scene. Um, for both projects, and that's um what um, as I said, is approved, and the proposed project, um, street scene for both of them is um below. So um, so all the modifications that are being requested, this it's important to keep in mind that the overall um project and the perspective and the visual aesthetic um remains the same, the design style remains the same. And they've strived to the made every effort to keep the 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 basic um perception from street level. Um, as consistent as possible with the original approvals. Okay, next slide, please. And I also put together um this chart. And we can come back to this later if we want to, but because they're looking at these projects together. I um put together a chart that just indicates what's approved and proposed. So the five eighteen, which is in the orange, um is the first project we're looking at. You know, the units remain the same. Um, the general commercial is somewhat reduced, um and the parking is being adjusted. But there's statistics here that show um the combined projects too when they're looked at. Um, there that the impacts are kind of equalized and um we can come back to this and take a look, but I thought it was a very useful um just chart to have to look at. Um, same thing with the amenities, there's the Creekside project in blue, the five eighteen and orange and the combined projects, what the overall um differences are. And um with that, I would like to go forward and move into the um the five eighteen. So the five eighteen is on the um northeast corner of Second Street and Avenue Flags. It's a one point two two acre parcel that is in the hundred-year flood zone. And then the Avenue of Flags specific plan, the underlying zoning there is general commercial. And the baseline height for uh buildings in that area per our code is thirty five feet. Well, the specific plan does allow incentives um to be considered uh allowing the height to go up to fifty feet. So just putting it all into perspective in terms of what's allowed for the site. Okay, next, please. So they mentioned, um, so this is a development plan modification request. And basically, the override, the overall reason is that they're striving to achieve more economic viability and constructability with the projects and to achieve some design efficiencies while preserving the architectural character of the project. Um, and as mentioned, the both projects would be built as one development. And we went through um the entitlements on the property that um would be modified, next, please. So the approved entitlements included some exceptions that would be affected by the proposed changes. So one of the changes, um, the proposed change is requesting an additional six-foot height increase, uh which includes the addition of a fourth story. The building height had already received a six-foot height increase um building incentive through the D O R program. Um, another D O R incentive for the project was um for residential density to allow a density of thirty nine units per acre. And this um enabled uh the development of forty eight units on the uh the size of a property. Uh, and this is consistent with the what's allowed in the Avenue of Flags specific plan. So the proposed project, um, the density remains the same, it's forty eight units, so that has not changed. The prior approval had a plan modification that was um built into the development plan process for to allow tandem parking. And this is typically not outright allowed by the code, but in certain cases, um, there are variances that can be um uh, you know, um obtained for that. So the prior approval included a allowance to build thirty eight parking spaces in the tandem configuration. The proposed project, because they've changed the overall um uses um and reduced the amount of commercial, um, the parking requirement is reduced. So they were able to reduce the amount of tandem parking to only twelve spaces. So basically, this is a lesser deviation than um was approved, which is, you know, lesser impact. Um, and building height setback modification, and I'll get into this a little bit more in detail. Um, but this is a an element of the Avenue of Flags plan where by um the facades that are greater than ten the facades that are higher than thirty feet at the property line. Anything above the thirty-foot facade would need to be set back at least ten foot, ten feet from the property line. And the plan modification that was approved at that time allowed um uh thirty three percent of the average portion of the facades to be set back less than that requirement. The proposed changes have actually improved on this, so there's lesser deviations um resulting. Right, next slide, please. So I went through some of these key changes that are affecting the development agreement, which would trigger a an amendment to the um approved development agreement is the height increase and also the change of use. So with the new pro- the the proposed modification, the project is introducing a new use that was not considered as part of the original approval. And this is the live-work use. It is an allowed use within the specific plan. Um, it just was not part of the approval that was originally um obtained. So getting down to some of the other changes in the that affect the the development plan itself. So they're proposing to consolidate two buildings into one L-shaped building. They are preserving the streetscape to the extent possible, and as seen in the perspective, it's it's the same visual. They're reducing the building footprint and the total floor area, and they're reconfiguring the site plan, the circulation, the access points, and the parking layout. And finally, they're changing the distribution of land uses and the amenities. Next, please. The land use changes, um, so before they were approved for forty eight units, um, they're proposing forty eight units as well. Um, the change here is that forty four units would be a traditional multifamily, and four units would be the live-work um type of unit. Commercial, the general commercial approved for fifty five hundred square feet um is being reduced to fourteen seventy five, and that's essentially the cafe, the corner cafe or restaurant. Um, but then they're also proposing two thousand seven hundred ninety square feet of work commercial in this live-work space. So the residential, the density is really not an issue at this point, it's consistent with what was approved. They're reducing the general commercial area. As a result, the parking will change, and that will be shown on a different slide too, because the parking demand is different for a live-work units than it is for general commercial. And then the new live-work units, so I would be on the ground floor uh Frontig Avenue Flags, and they would uh have traditional commercial frontages. And the conditions of approval specify the types of uses allowed, and generally, these would be shops, restaurants, and services or and similar pedestrian-oriented businesses. So there would be no ground floor residential on the Avenue of Flags frontage and no future conversion to all residential. Landscaping, open space and amenities changes. Um, so amenities. So the the previous project had, the approved project had a lot of amenities that couldn't be actually classified as open space, but they were amenities that still afforded the um residents some, you know, activities. Um, so those are being reduced. Um, but on the other hand, there is, there are some increases and enhancements to the kind of amenities that are being provided. Um, and we'll get to that in a moment. The open space that's required um for the project is so there's meeting the open space requirement. But what they are um providing more of is private patio space. So this is increased from the approved project from two thousand square feet to five thousand square feet. So um residential um tenants would have larger private open space. Um, and the overall landscaping has increased too. So it um whereas seventy nine hundred square feet was uh approved, now they're providing over nine thousand square feet. So the onsite amenities that were approved previously have been eliminated, but enhanced amenities um are proposed to be provided. And these would be shared with the five eighteen property. So um because the building, I'm sorry, with the with the Creekside project. Um, so they would be sharing the um gym, the courtyard pool deck and lounge area, the business they would be sharing the gym, the courtyard pool deck and lounge area, the business center and the additional roof decks. Both properties would have access to these areas and these would be physically located on the Creekside property. All right, next please. So the parking, this is where this breakdown of the spaces. How it equates before on the approved project, they were required to have ninety six spaces, they were providing ninety eight spaces, of which thirty eight were tandem. Now they're required to provide eighty two spaces. They're still, they're providing eighty two spaces. The lower parking requirement results from the reduced general commercial area. But also allow them to reduce the amount of tandem spaces that they needed to provide. So it makes it a lesser of an impact and actually improvement for the, the user experience on the folks living there. They've introduced new freestanding garages at the east property line. And these would be at the rear of the property adjacent to the existing apartment building in the back. And what they're proposing is consistent with code. They're set back by feet from the property line and there's landscaping in that area. And they're also consistent with the height limit allowed by code, which is, I believe it's twelve feet for accessory structure, which is what these garages would be. And they would, they are required to be, their design would be consistent with the overall building design. Change to the circulation, because they've reconfigured the, the building and kind of consolidated the building footprint. It allows a more open circulation and really better use of the space there. But it also enables a single driveway approach along Second Street. So they would be eliminating the previous driveway that was closest to Avenue Flags, which kind of broke up that short block there. So this allows for additional on-street parking and circulation to loop around the parking area. Building heights, okay, so the project was approved previously for forty one foot height. So this was six feet above the thirty five foot baseline allowed by code. And they received a D O R incentive for that. The proposed project is requesting an additional six feet, six foot height increase for a total height of forty seven feet. So this would be a twelve foot cumulative increase over the baseline. And this would accommodate the fourth story that's setback. And in considering this increased height, one of the elements the planning commission would look at is additional height consistent with the vision and intent of the specific plan. And does it warrant changes to the D O R terms? And the facade set height setback. It, as I mentioned, it received the plan modification for the facade setbacks. So now the, with the changes being proposed, the changes to the third floor facades are there's slightly more setback, so there's less of a deviation. And the, on the fourth floor addition, quite a large portion are setback. So they're really not as visible from the street. So only twenty two percent average of the portions jut out a little bit because there's articulation in the facade. So there's that jutting out that you know, represents this twenty two percent. And overall visually, it appears consistent with the Avenue Flags vision and intent. So the design style has remained consistent. So additional items to consider as far as engineering goes. The applicant has provided a substantial conformance letter and it was prepared by their still engineer that they've, they've determined that the proposed grading and drainage design would be consistent with the approved plans. Of course, our, you know, when we go through the plan review, might have to make sure that that really is consistent. But our public works director has looked at that and has determined that, you know, the overall impact on the site grading itself. Even though with the reconfiguration, but the overall impact would, you know, it would be in substantial conformance with what was approved before. The floodplain ordinance, they're still in the hundred year flood zone, so it that situation hasn't changed. FEMA is updating the maps and they're in the process of updating the the boundaries of the maps and, you know, what type of standards would need to be followed. But that process has not been finalized and the county is working on approving the standards and you know, they would, the project would need to comply with whatever standards are in place at the time of permit approvals and they're aware of that. Yeah, so they're, they're planning to flood proof the buildings. Environmental item issue, so the the approved project, it was determined at that time that it was adequately addressed in the Avenue Flag specific plan mitigated negative declaration. The post modifications would be in substantial conformance to the approved project. And would remain generally consistent as conditioned with the specific plan. And they would not result in potential new environmental impacts or changes to the mitigation measures. So the environmental determination for the, that was part of the approved project would apply to this project as well. Rather to the modification. As, as planning commissioners are aware, story poles are typically requested on projects over twenty five feet in height. So story poles were erected for the approved project. And it was a, you know, it's because this involves a height increase. To be, you know, making sure that we're in compliance with the code. You know, we took a look at the applicability of story poles. And so there is a provision in the code which allows city council to weigh, to weigh in on whether story poles would provide clarification for a review of projects. And the applicant took a, you know, felt that they would like to submit a request to the city council to request for a waiver of the story pole requirement for this particular modification and presented justification to city council as to why additional installation of story poles would not significantly provide more clarification for review of the project. And city council granted the waiver in July of this year. And that waiver, the waiver request that was prepared by the applicant is in your in a packet. Okay. And now we'll go through some of the highlights of the changes and we do have the plans available to, to look through in case there are questions. And I didn't put all of them up because there's a lot of ground to cover here, but ground, yes, ground floor. So I just put the, the approved site plan out for context. So it's basically two separate buildings. The building on the left was a commercial space with some residential above. And then the building in the middle was of a U shaped building, the courtyard in the middle, which was the residential structure and had garages on the, on the ground floor. And that's where the tandem garages came into play. So the proposed site plan on the ground floor has changed the configuration. There are no longer ground floor tuck under garages. But the building is kind of in an L shape here, still the commercial frontage on Avenue Flags where the live work commercial is. There's the town plaza, corner courtyard and cafe proposed at the intersection. And on Second Street, which is the Second Street frontage, there are a couple of residential units. And then when we go to the next slide, which is the second floor, you can see how the second floor stacks on top. So there's three residential levels on top of the ground floor. And the orange on the plans here represent outdoor roof decks and common areas for the tenants. And light orange, I should have said the dark orange, the light orange areas do represent private open space with the tenants. And just scroll through the, the third floor plans and the, again, stacking right on top of that building footprint and the fourth floor plans. And all of the, the second, third and fourth floors all have common open space roof decks. Okay, so this is, just take a look at the approved elevation on, from Avenue, looking from Avenue Flags. So what's approved is on the top and what's being proposed is on the bottom. So the fourth story is setback. And there are balconies in the front. So there's articulation in the facades and it's ground level commercial, just as the other, the approved plans were. Next, please. And the south elevation, which would be from Second Street. This is where you can really see the difference in how the buildings have been reoriented. So on the approved elevation on the top, you see the separate commercial building. It was attached to the residential building via walkway, which was a pedestrian bridge and it was considered an amenity. Had benches and a view, but it was there was a lot of circulation that was taken up, vehicular circulation on the site plan. And to make better use of the site and actually to give it a little bit even more open space in the rear area. They've consolidated the building into the one basic building footprint in this L shape. And as you can see on the right in the post, so the, the end of the main building there is just a one story. I believe those are parking garages and there's a roof deck on the top. And then it provides a little bit more open space between the, the main structure and the residential apartments to the east. So that was one of the efficiencies and the design elements that they felt would be an improved experience for the tenants. These are site sections which we can go through and can come back and look at if anybody would like to. But hang on, one second. I just wanted to point out that the building on the, on the far right, that is the existing Avenue Heights Apartments. So it just shows in context what the buildings, the proposed building would now look like in you know, next to the apartments. And there is more overall open space there. But there are a small row of standalone garages as well as carports along the eastern property line there. Okay, thanks. This is the color and materials. Actually, this is the approved. So let's, let's move on. Yeah, so the proposed color and materials is in your packet. So this is the street context, I think this is the same slide I had on earlier, so we can move on. This is the landscape plan, mainly showing the ground floor landscaping. And they do meet and exceed the landscape requirement for the entire site. Okay, next. And this is a concept signage that's actually from the approved project. They would, they would need to basically be consistent with the signage that was approved as part of the original plans. And they are conditioned to, as was the previous project, previous approved project. They are still conditioned to come back with a master sign program and a separate sign permit before receiving zoning clearance to move forward with the building permit. Okay. This is a street perspective, showing what the proposed project would look like from the corner. And it gives a kind of feel for the fourth floor, really the setback. So the street presence, for the most part, is well, actually, pretty much entire area is a third floor street presence, except when you go a little bit further back, when you can see the fourth floor jutting out. So it's not, it's not a big block, four story building. Next, please. And these are just examples of some of the common area areas that are on the roof, like the roof deck. Okay, next. Aha, yeah, this is the one that I was looking for. So this actually shows the small row of garages that we would be introduced next to the rear property line. And it's not the entire length of it, but these garages are conditioned to be designed in a, you know, the style that's consistent with the main building, which is in art deco format. Yeah, landscaping as well. Okay. Okay, we can, we can move on here. Okay. So just getting into the, what the resolution does. Get touched on this a little bit in the beginning. It recommends approval to the city council of the development plan modification. It would modify the previously approved final development plan. It would also result in amendments to the development agreement. So I've listed the modified conditions of approval and I can go through them in detail. It will kind of too long to summarize in the PowerPoint presentation. But basically, just to real quickly go through it. There was a revised project description and, and rereading it just before I came here, I realized there was an errata in the project's description and the conditions of approval, which will be corrected. The city council meeting, but there was one typo in the the number, the case number for the development plan modification and the project description. So that is going to be corrected to read twenty four D P M oh one, as it does everywhere else. But there were changes to, for instance, condition sixty three, which was the architectural design. And it needed to mention that it would apply to the fourth floor addition as well and that this would need to be consistent. This, this fourth floor would need to be consistent with the architectural character details that are reflected in the remainder of the project. There is a similar set of conditions for the Creekside project. So I'll just kind of explain some of these. So we just needed to make sure that we picked up the, the changes like trash enclosure design needs to be consistent with the overall building design. And condition seventy two needed to be modified because the permit that's actually being granted now is the modified project, which is the twenty four D P M oh one. Condition seventy four is total number of parking spaces is now eighty two. Moving a light intensities again, the fourth floor would need to comply with the light intensities as well. Condition eighty five was for the commercial loading zone. A portion of this condition is being deleted because it, the prior, the previously approved loading zone was actually striped parking that would be used during the day. And deliveries after hours, so we needed to condition that so that there wouldn't be a conflict. This is no longer the case. They have a dedicated commercial loading zone. That's not in conflict with any required parking for vehicles anymore. Condition eighty eight is the amenity bridge, open space or, or I should say, open space that was looked at as an amenity. It's no longer part of the project, so this condition is being deleted. And condition eighty nine pertains to the development opportunity reserve terms. And this is, this will be revised as dependent upon what the city council determines for the terms of the D O R incentives. Okay, so with that, I wanted to mention that in the resolution, there are Okay, so with that, I wanted to mention that in the resolution, there are some added conditions of approval. Probably the the most extensive ones pertain to the live work uses. For the for this project, there's four units of new live work uses. And you know, go through the highlights of the conditions for the live work. Because strictly residential uses are not allowed on the ground floor of building frontages along the Avenue of Flags. The live or residential portions of the ground floor units could not be located on the street facing side of the units. And no future conversion to all residential would be permitted in the live work spaces. The live work units shall maintain a storefront presence, same as a traditional commercial business. Pedestrian oriented. And we have provided some examples of the types of uses that would be deemed to be appropriate for these units. So those are detailed in the condition. And again, the it condition also states that the live work units shall be designed and operated primarily as commercial uses. Again, within accessory residential area. But we want to maintain staff would wants to maintain the commercial presence along the avenue. And that's the, one of the items, the elements of the live work is lease-up and phasing of the live work units. And there were several points there that were part of the conditions. The applicant has submitted some refinements to these. They're consistent with the conditions as we've written them, but there are some legal terms that need to be considered as well. So these will be reviewed by the city council and so you may see slightly different wording in this condition when it goes to city council. I just wanted to bring that to attention as a planning commission. And okay, so the next added condition is in regard to the garage accessory structures that are being introduced. And I already covered the fact that they're going to be set back from the property line and the required landscape screening. But that needed to be added to the conditions because that was not a structure that was in the previously approved plans. And finally, a condition for the shared amenities. Because the shared amenities would be located on the companion project Creekside Village, there needs to be a reciprocal access agreement between the two properties so that both properties can use the shared amenities and have access to them. And the conditions state that this shall be a irrevocable reciprocal access agreement. For both properties. Okay, so with that, we can go to the next slide. And in considering action that the planning commission would take this evening, so it's basically recommending to the city council the modifications with a focus on the development plan elements. Consistency with the Avenue Flags specific plan. The overall design aesthetics, including the facade and setbacks, the site plan, how the reconfiguration works. You know, the height increase, the fourth floor addition, introduction of a new live work uses and the revised approach to providing the common area amenities. So once the planning commission takes action tonight to recommend, the ad hoc committee of city council will be convened to discuss. And they would also recommend to the full city council potential modifications to the DOR terms, terms of incentives and financial benefits and potential modifications to the development agreement. So in taking action this evening, in addition to like acting on the resolution itself. You know, planning commission, any advisory comments that the planning commission would like to, you know, provide to go along with that recommendation regarding the development plan modifications, potential revisions to the DOR terms and the development agreements. The comments would be passed along to both the ad hoc committee and the city council to aid them in making their 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 decisions and and further actions. So I just wanted to make sure that the, you know, planning commission, you know, discusses and provides any comments and we will definitely provide those to the city council and the ad hoc committee. Okay, next slide please. So with that, we'll read the recommendation and that that is that the planning commission consider the adoption of resolution number twenty-four oh five to recommend to the city council approval of the development plan modification. Twenty-four DPM oh one, which would modify the previously approved final development plan for the five eighteen mixed use project. All right. That concludes my presentation on this project. And so just flip to the next slide, please, Kara. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have. Do you have the applicant branded man here? We'll make a short presentation and answer any questions and that the commission may have. Go through planning commission comments, any public comments that we may have and planning commission action.
Thank you for a great presentation. Do you have any questions, Tanya or Irma?
Has this gone through an outsourced design review already or?
The overall project went through the design review at the time when it was approved. The modifications went through. Oh gosh, you know, we didn't really go through a detailed design review overall again. But the the design itself has remained consistent with what they had originally approved. And just gonna make sure, I don't think.
That's consistent with the general specific plan.
It is consistent with the specific plan, they maintain the the overall art deco design, which there were not substantial changes to the way the project was designed. And so and the architectural detailing and the character was remains what what they were approved for, it's just that the fourth floor addition is required to be consistent with what the previous approval was. So it went, the approved project went through extensive design reviews numerous times.
Okay, so it doesn't trigger a new because we're adding additional.
Right, it it did not trigger an additional design review at this point.
And then you said, I mean, it's at one point two acres, is that right? So isn't that trigger in EIR?
There is a specific plan EIR, right?
Yeah, so the specific plan had mitigated negative declaration prepared for it when it was approved. And the use, the intensity of use is consistent with what was analyzed as part of the mitigated negative declaration for the specific plan in this project. What they are proposing is consistent with what was analyzed at that point. There have been no changes, no environment, no new environmental impacts that would have triggered any additional analysis from an environmental standpoint. And because this project also is one acre site and it's an infill site. It would also qualify for a categorical exemption based on infill as long as certain criteria can be met. And one of the criteria that we studied further in the for the prior approval was traffic. To make sure that that traffic criteria for infill could be met. And because the intensity of use has not increased, so that the same amount of residential units and and the commercial space has decreased. So the resulting traffic impact from the proposed project is even less than what was originally approved. So we felt that it really didn't trigger any new analysis could be impacted. Wouldn't be any greater, it would be back less.
Okay, those are my questions.
So?
I'm sorry, I have a lot of questions.
Okay.
Okay. So ultimately, if I know the modification has to go to the council. If they don't approve the height increase, what happens to our approval? Does it revert back to the prior final development plan that was approved or we'd have to revisit probably?
We'd have to revisit, depending, it would, it would depend on how the council, what type of action council takes and, you know, they could send it back to planning commission, which is or, you know, the developer that got their time could determine how they would like to proceed.
Okay. Okay, and then I, as far as the live work, which I thought was an interesting concept, I have a couple of questions about that. The first is about how the DIFs work for it, the, or sorry, the impact mitigation fees would work, like do do we fee the unit? Or, I mean.
That's a really good question and I'm happy to get back to you on that.
I should have asked it earlier.
You know, the the live work units are it's an emerging trend for a type of, you know, residential living space, I mean, I'm sorry. Living workspace combination that was trending to be popular in the market, but after COVID, it seems like it's even, you know, it's becoming more of a, more of a a trend and some of, some of the nuances are are still being sorted out. So I'm making a note of this and the impact fees and I'm happy to get back to you on that. You know, look into that a little bit and make sure we address that in the council staff report as well.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I had seen, I saw the note about how they may not count for RINAN numbers. But I just wasn't sure how that would work since there is a a unit, so, okay. And then as far as those standards that are, I think they're on page six about how the live work units actually operate. And it, I think it's like constrained to the owner or operator.
I'm sorry, which page?
Page six, sorry. Okay, and I was wondering, do those come from the specific plan, those standards?
No. The the sub, the components of the the condition is what you're asking, okay.
Yeah, the where.
Basically, the 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 specific plan that says live work uses are allowed. And so we took a look at, you know, how this would fit into the specific plan. So the specific plan does not allow residential uses on the ground floor of Avenue Flags frontage. So we needed to put a condition to make sure. So we kind of went through the specific plan to see what the vision and intent of the specific plan is. And because the specific plan talks about pedestrian oriented activity and pedestrian oriented commercial along, you know, the Avenue Flags. So we took a look at what type of uses would make sense because live work, they could be a use that doesn't activate the avenue, could be just office space that the public wouldn't be accessing, so we wanted to make sure that it was consistent with what was the vision for the Avenue Flags. And we just went into a little bit more detail on that. And want to make sure that they did not become all residential space in the future because then that would trigger other issues with the specific plan. And then the the phasing of the live work unit, so this is where we're still working out some of the details of the wording of the condition, as I mentioned. Our, you know, city attorney, we we worked through some of these concepts with our city attorney as well and we will work with the developer, the applicant as well to see how we can refine this to make sure that you know, we're providing opportunity for the units that the business operators and occupants of those units to give them ample opportunity to start up their business. And if the business is not successful, we want to make, give them ample opportunity to know that maybe that unit will no longer, they will no longer be able to occupy that unit either as a business or as a residence. So so we want to make sure that, you know, the city and and the developer and the residents are all protected and given ample notices upfront. So we tried to work into this. You know, the specific plan didn't get into this level of detail when it was written.
I I only asked because I think where it talks about who the residential tenants could be. It says they shall be owners or operators of that commercial business and I would like to put forth for consideration at least to be able to be a full-time employee potentially.
Okay.
Maybe there are implications that we're not thinking about if we include them. But just to have more flexibility, I think otherwise it could be limiting in the types of businesses.
Okay, that's a good point.
And then the other thing that I had noticed, I I definitely understand why the commercial portion couldn't be converted to a live portion, but could the work portion be expanded in the future? If someone wanted a larger tenant space.
That is a, that is a question that staff has discussed as well. And you know, that that would be up to the to the the property owner, the applicant may be able to address that because we asked that question and it was it was not their intent for that to happen. But we did have this discussion with the building department in terms of the type of building, how the 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 units were being built, how the building was being built and if it would, if they could convert it easily to all commercial in the future, say, so desired and the occupancy and the building standards and the fire protection. Oh, I've learned a lot about this. So basically, those are all being built to commercial standards so that they could easily convert in the future if they needed to.
Yeah, the only place I thought it could get tricky is with parking, but I think the residential parking demands are higher, so it probably would work.
Yeah.
Okay, then the landscape buffer that's in the rear where the now there's going to be those twelve garages. I mean, they didn't really specify what plant type would be used in that area and I would I was curious, this more question to the applicant, but would they be receptive to a condition for minimum height of screening? Because it is going to be pretty massive, like a a flat, you know, surface facing those apartment structures and maybe a minimum.
To establish minimum, and actually our code does have, does require a permanent screening. Either, well, no, actually in that area is landscape screening that provides a certain height to adequately buffer the area. But we also, and it's a, it's an interesting question, though, you know, right now, there's, there's expansive view from the neighboring and so you also don't want to close off their airspace too much, so. But a certain reasonable minimum, I think, would be an appropriate element to add.
And I was just not, I wasn't thinking taller than the garages, but somewhere, you know, below the height of the wall.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be, yeah, not.
Certainly would be, yeah.
Just screen the wall.
That certainly would be appropriate, yeah.
Let's see. Five, in the the south elevation, I think it was A nine. Five, um, in the, the south elevation, I think it was A nine, it was in a slide. Um, there, they got rid of the large pedestrian bridge and.
Mm-hmm.
That makes sense to me. Um, and they, they have the two smaller at two different level. Um, which I, I like that they're maintaining some of that feature. I was curious from the applicant's perspective if. I said, they used to have the railing, the wrought iron detailing on the, the sides of those bridges, and if that's. Something that could potentially be maintained.
Okay, um. We can um have the applicant a- address that.
And. I think that was it. Thank you, guys.
It's not so much a question, right, but I would tend to agree with Shannon. My concern with because now the new live work, if. Some of these businesses that don't pan out. And whether it's an employee or owner-owned, occupied, um. Would that CUP be, you know, like, solid, like, okay, you know, once the business closed, you're. Lose your living space. And we were looking at some other projects that had that same.
Mm-hmm.
Thing uh involved, and we didn't put that into it. So I'm just wondering, does that CUP should re-trust that CUP at that same time now, or let council do that?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
I mean, if we add this to our approval. Or even though we're just adding it on to that, uh, I mean, is that something that council can say, well, we're not agreeing with you or?
Ah, okay, in other words, to um.
Well, I think you have a mechanism in here, right? If the commercial properties shop rate.
Yeah.
For a six-month period, then they shall terminate all tenants, occupant employees.
And it is in the condition.
So, okay.
Yeah, it is in the, that's, yep.
So vacate the re- uh, the unit.
Yeah.
Yeah, and um, so I'm, I, I'm not sure if that answers.
Well, yeah, it does. I just, 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 you know. It says the state is there, but you know, you always run into situation, well, you know. You know, with RINAN numbers and other numbers that we, we look at and.
And, and that's, that's also a very good point, and um. So these units would not be counted towards our RINAN numbers because of that very. Fact that they, you know, these are businesses also, and there's, there could be tenant changes. Um, occurring more often than in the typical, typical um residential unit, and what if? It converts to all commercial in the future? I mean, we are looking at, the city is looking at these as primarily commercial.
Right, initially.
Operation, so um, we thought that the, the, the best way to approach that is to not include these numbers in the RINAN. And so we wouldn't be running into issues with HCD when, when these types of changes occur.
Okay. Any other questions for, I don't know. If that will let the applicant Brandon come up and speak to us.
Oh, thank you, planning commission and Shannon, it's good to see you here. I usually see you on Zoom for the county. I was like, good questions, has, I'm a planner. Um, so Brandon Mann on behalf of the applicant, as some of you have seen many times, and some are new faces. Um, it's been a long time coming, but we're excited to finally get this project moving and uh staff has been amazing. Irma, I know you've worked really long and hard trying to address all these, but it's, uh, it's been a collaborative process. So I, I can answer some of these questions, and I didn't know if we were going to go through both projects and then um present, or we do one at a time. Uh, but I can go through the five eighteen, so uh, Karen, can you pull up just like the site plan for the five eighteen PDF?
Yeah, and just to that point.
Do you have the?
Brandon.
Maybe like the actual whole site plan? Yeah.
We need, we needed to address these separately because they were entitled separately.
I just figured like if one's not going to get approved and one's not, like, we're not going to build like one building.
Well, that's why I did put, I, I do have a comparison, and I wanted to introduce this as the companion project, just to set the stage for that. But we needed to go through and the motions, uh, the resolutions have to be all.
They have to be separate.
Separately in the conditions too.
Perfect, I have to start from the. So I can just walk through some and address some of the comments as we go. Uh, yeah. Then if you want to go to like the first, I guess the site plan is fine, uh, does, does the site, isn't the first page show like, like a comparable between the two? Think on the site plan?
Um, there's a perspective of.
Maybe not this, I think on the four eighty one it does, oh, so the original, so just for. Some of the planning commissioners that weren't here, you go, yeah, uh, for the original site plan, you go back to the one up. So this building, we tried to use as much area as we could. Um, and the issue we ran into was as we went to, uh. This project was approved in twenty twenty-one, the other project was approved in twenty twenty. And I believe when we went to go get everything out, as we were doing our financing during COVID. I think construction went up like sixty percent from, and nothing changed. And one of the big issues was that these buildings were separate. It actually is almost like three separate buildings. Because that little building down there was just connected via some bridges. So we needed to find a way to optimize the building, but our intent from day one, as we worked with staff on this too, was. That we wanted to have the projects transform in a way that can form to the development agreement under the modification and not re-trigger a new entitlement. But be enough of an impact that it would make sense for us to actually put shovels in the ground. Uh, and while maintaining mostly as much as we could, the same visual aesthetic, so. It basically, when we get to the pi- picture that shows the comparable projects like Irma showed before. If you didn't know that this is a new project that's being proposed or new design or updated design. It wouldn't, you wouldn't have known that it had changed from the previous approvals, really, unless you were really looking in. And this project, as far as the height, did have, is asking for a little bit more than was previously approved. But with the new height, we are able to, not only is it more efficient, we set it back. But also we're able to access more usable open space, so if you go down to the next slide. So one of the things on the project previously and planning commission had brought up was they wanted to see more user, like, oriented amenities. And when the building took up most of the side area, we didn't have many areas that we could do that, so. Even though on the numbers, the amenities, they're conditioned amenities which were in buildings. So the previous project had like a few different buildings and an outdoor courtyard area. But those amenities had gone down, however, we've added private patios to every unit. And then actually, there is, as part of the open space, because we were trying to fight to figure out how we could get all the open space on the previous building. So the corner plaza stays the same, every unit gets a patio. There is an interior courtyard there, and then if you go to the next slide, there's actually an addition of like. Large roof decks on each level, so you can see even that one is very, very large, so. Even though it counts towards open space and it looks like our amenity space had been reduced, the amount of usable open space has significantly increased. So instead of counting open space as just area that is not corridor space that we could put a table and chair on. Now there's actually like a area that has a real function for open space. Um, so seating, like, we'll have kitchens out there. I think some of them are going to have barbecues and fire pits and just areas that people can. Actually use versus just trying to find anything that wasn't considered a hallway or something to count towards open space. Um, and if you keep going down, so I just want, because I know on the numbers it says the amenities have been reduced, but we. We kind of feel that the actual usable amenities have, have actually greatly increased. And as part of that, the overall building footprint has been reduced. Um, and then, let's see, so while we're here, just talking about the commercial. One of the challenges also with getting this project approved is the Avenue of Flag specific plan, like Irma mentioned, does condition that. They want to have the commercial frontage on the avenue, and our previous projects had about, I think it was ten thou- fifteen thousand square feet between both projects. And as one of the major challenges to get these projects built was everybody. Thought that commercial was dead during the COVID period, it was really hard to finance, we didn't know if we could lease it all up, and then you just have these like empty commercial spaces on the avenue, which wouldn't serve really any purpose. So we didn't want to try to change the way the building functioned or operated or looked and still keep that same experience. So we reduced the amount of actual, like, just pure commercial, but we kind of kept it very similar when you include the live work. And that is something that I know has been a recent trend, but if it's going to go anywhere, we figured that on the downtown would probably be the best place for it. Not somewhere, you know, maybe on like industrial way or something else where there's not, you know, it's more like commercial just focused. So if there's going to be a live work, this probably be the best place to do it, and. I like to also zoom out and look at the Avenue of Flags as a whole. There's only so many actual usable viable pieces of land that. Could fit residential, because for, for, like, on the other half of Avenue of the Flags, where some of the, like, the. The width or the length of the depth of those lots are is very shallow, and it. It works really well for a commercial, kind of where the, the old, you know, the barn is. Um, and those could, could become great commercial uses, but if you're actually going to be building residential on the avenue. It's really these two lots, maybe the Anderson lot, the lots in between us, and maybe some of the motel lots to the other side, so. While it looks like, it might seem like we're not adding as much commercial activation than before, we feel like it'll still operate and be effectively the same. If you look at the avenue as a full buildout, there is only so much residential land, and there's a lot of area for new commercial uh spaces. So we hope that that kind of balances out, even though these might go up first. Um, and then as far as the full-time employee and the kind of a fifty fifty. Um, Shannon, to that point, I think the, it's part of the county requirements where they make us have. Only fifty percent of it can be commercial, I think it has to be like fifty percent or no more. So even if we wanted to add more commercial, I don't think we could, because we can't have the residential be less than, I think it's fifty or forty-five percent or something of the commercial space. Um, and then as far as the full-time employee, I think that's actually a great idea. I would imagine that these units are, and I don't know how that gets added or not, but. Whether it's a tenant um who's the actual owner, or whether it's an employee that is going to operate the front end of the business and live there, I think that's a good idea. Um, unfortunately, for the problem of having a tenant lose their lease if the commercial isn't viable. While I would love to see the people stay there. If those air, if those units are really conditioned as like, no one's going to live behind the unit, and then a new commercial space is going to come in. And like, they share a wall and everything, so we just want to open it up, because we want both to be filled. Um, so, and then as far as Shannon, the wrought iron railing, if you go to maybe like one of the next slides. Yeah, so that had, I, I actually liked that amenity bridge, I thought it was pretty cool, but it was very expensive, it was like a million dollars for that one bridge. Um, and we, we were still dealing with fire, they were going to have an issue like getting through that area. Um, I liked the wrought iron before, but we didn't see there was a place to kind of put that. Um, around the project, because we kind of have to put it everywhere. I can talk to, as we go through like the building permits and the construction document uh plans. We can take a look at what type, what, what we can put aesthetically on the project and we can try. But it just seemed like it was the best fit for some of these like walkways that were on their own. Um, so it would kind of, kind of stand out unless we put it everywhere around the project, and it is, it is pretty expensive. Um, so the goal is to try to keep it as aesthetically pleasing, as close to art deco as possible, which. Also, I know that a lot of people here have heard me talk about a lot since they got approved, but art deco is probably the most expensive uh architectural design choice for a building. Um, so we're, we're doing the best we can, but I think the building does look good, and I'm looking forward to seeing the other projects on the avenue that adopt the same style. Um, so I can answer any questions, I just figured if you want to keep going through, maybe to the. So, oh, talking about the amenities, so this is the same on both site plans slides, but um, one of the things that, as we get to on the four eighty. This, that building probably had the most changes from the original approval, and that was the oldest. But now we have the addition of an actual pool area, which is something I always wanted, but we didn't think we had the space before to put it in. And we never wanted to put a pool on a roof or something like that. I, I actually lived under a pool uh once, and it leaked into my unit twice, we were displaced. So I wouldn't do that to anybody, but we have a pool now, we have a business center, which will be helpful for the tenants. There was conversations with opening that up for the public. The issue that we had was security and also just traffic. Um, we kind of conditioned it for people that are living there between the hundred and twelve resident or units, um, maybe two hundred plus people. Could have a space if they needed to do a meeting or work or anything, we thought that was a good amenity, just given the times. Um, and then we still have the cafe dining, like, pure uh commercial spaces on the courtyards. There's a dedicated gym area, but most of the usable amenity space is going to be those like rooftop decks, which we again plan to have. I think a few of them are going to have gas stove ranges, um, if we can still do that. Or any kind of like outdoor cooking barbecue areas, you know, maybe we can project a movie on the wall for one of them, like, they're actually pretty large, and the four eighty has some. Actually, I think larger ones than the five eighteen, but they're, they're really cool spaces, so when the. Avenue Flags has the uh, the median, I think it's like median two in front of our project, becomes the uh, like, um, the fun median. When you guys have your outdoor uh concerts and everything, I'm hoping people can use these spaces to enjoy that as well. Um, but yeah, and I think the only other one, if you could go to the, just to pull up, yeah, so the side by side, so this was. The real challenge for us was, how do we make sure that we can actually build these buildings, and they're not just pretty on paper? But also maintain the same look and feel, so it wouldn't really function any differently. And I think we did a pretty good job, they're, they are a little bit taller than before, but there's pros and cons. People don't like to hear four stories, but we did our best to set it back within the building, so when you're on the street. You wouldn't really even notice, it stays, it maintains pretty much the third story feel as far as the frontage is concerned. Um, and the rest is set back far enough to where it doesn't become an issue for sightline. Uh, the only thing would be on the four eighty, you kind of see a little bit more of it, but you'd have to be pretty far back on the street to, to notice. Um, again, we're still under the DOR's maximum incentives, but that was kind of a concession that we had to make to. Be able to make the building efficient and also get more open space on the project. Um, was adding that extra height, but we tried to minimize the impact as much as possible, so. That's for the five eighteen, I'm sure I'll say a lot of the same things for the four eighty, but each project has its own unique uh little things in it. But I'm happy to answer any questions, if, if there is any.
Okay, one question for the panel. No.
No, I didn't have any questions, but um, and, and I went over my mind that they were losing parking spaces. But when I look at the plans, it, it just, it looks better, it's uh actually for less congestion where you have it now. And I like that, thank you.
And, and just to, just to clarify too, because I know probably Dave King is watching, we didn't lose parking spaces, the, the total number went down, but the actual impact of. Uh, the required spaces went down, so the proportion remains the same. So the five eighteen remains at a hundred percent parking ratio as required by code, but the total amount of spaces that were required is less, because there's a little bit less commercial. Um, just want to make sure, because we, that's another, that's a triggering a development mod thing if we remove an entitlement condition. Um, but yeah, we feel that these projects, like, when, when these were originally proposed and designed, the world was a little bit different. Um, economically and financially, but we also had thought that we would address a lot of the things that we spent time addressing for these mods. Like during the building permit um and construction document process, they were approved as like kind of entitlements that we would then refine and, and get our chisels uh done. But we actually did that upfront, so there, there, a lot more effort went into making sure that they were workable and efficient. So that's why they kind of look like uh maybe a better, more effective use of the space. We had some extra time to play around with them.
But, yeah. So it's four eighty, the only one that's going to have the solar canner lever?
Solar canner lever. So I believe on this one, so previously this project had two rows of solar panels that were proposed, uh, carports in the back. And the difference was previously to make the parking work, we had to have about thirty-eight tandem spaces, which was. Not that easy to get uh through the planning commission and council at the time, and I understand why. But with the new design, we've reduced that to, I think, twelve spaces, just with, between those two garages. The carports, we felt were nice because we could potentially put solar on top of the car panels and other areas of the roof. Uh, but they were also going to be closed off spaces for somebody to park their car, and they wouldn't just be like out in the open. Um, so we wanted to only use the same amount of space that was kind of previously covered, but. But I believe that we will be looking into solar for those areas too. I think there is some requirements for us to do that. But on the four eighty, I believe there's not any, right? Or there was, we removed the carports or the, they were carports. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So many changes. Any other questions for me on this one?
I just have comments.
Okay. No, I'll just, I'll just wait for comments. So thank you, Brandon. Any other question before we going? Okay, we'll bring back the comments and close that part. Daniel?
Just, I really like what you guys have done here. The whole complexity of the art deco and how it matches with future state of other buildings. And I hope that everybody else kind of mimics that.
That's, I think, since I joined the planning commission, that's been my my biggest gripe is that I don't wanna see built in with this mixed hush part of designs, even though it falls into art deco that we don't align them, where it kind of, you know, brings the city to life versus got all these little mismash of art deco. So appreciate you guys trying to do that, mimicking each other, kind of mirroring that building. And also, I really appreciate the play that our R R M is doing with the sightline. Keeps it, looks like you're still under that requirement, but we know that if you look on paper that it's not, but they did a good design there to kind of blend it. So the only thing that I might comment on is, you know, and I don't know if we fall into these regulations, but I know the county has a net zero policy or aiming to be a net zero policy, and I don't know how you guys are trying to adapt that kind of policy into your building, make it a little bit more energy efficient, things like that. I know just the heads up that the HVAC component is gonna change next year because of the new twenty twenty five law for, what is it? Four ten A to A two L's. So different children, codes are gonna change, so just keep an eye on that. Other than that, I I like what I see and I look forward to seeing this project.
Yeah, I like your project and it's, if we go to four stories, which I don't mind at all, it's gonna make a significant change to Buellton. It's gonna be significant and if it's anywhere close to the artist friend ring, it's gonna be really, really nice. I'm looking forward to it.
Alrighty, sorry, like notes too many places. Okay, yeah, I mean, I I really like actually the the opportunity for small business owners provided by having smaller commercial suites and and the live work component, I think is interesting. I am generally interested in like maximizing flexibility with that in case there's a tenant that wants to come in that wouldn't have a use for the the live component, which it sounds like you're considering. And if that's something that is built into the approval grid, so that people don't have to come back later if they do wanna make it a hundred percent work, I'm on board with that. I think the the loss of tandem spaces is great. I mean, those are, I've lived with tandem spaces. It's not fun. So I think that's a big improvement. In general, I like the architecture just as much. I mean, I thought that the the rounded windows were really cool and it's bummer to lose those. And I also liked the bridge across. But I get it. Yeah. And I think that the sharing of amenities between the two sites makes a lot of sense and is a logical move, cause it opens up what you can do on both properties. I I do think so that it looks like the garages have a finished height of like twelve and a half feet. And then or or thereabouts. So I would put forth, including a condition that the the screening be at least, I don't know what you guys are open to, but like six to eight feet, you know, something to soften that wall with, you know, trees that go higher. I'm open to whatever the applicant thinks would be feasible, given the limited planting space there. But I do think it would make sense to do as much as we can to soften that that view coming from the apartments on the other side. And I think that concludes my comments.
Good. Thank you, Brandon, for bringing it back. Having seen this both as planning and on council and part of the the committee for the D O R, I know you worked hard to get this. I like the change. I always run a big proponent for the bridge, cause I thought it broke up things and it made it look architecturally different, but yet kind of softened up the art deco. But I understand why. I agree with Shannon on the the landscaping, even though we're having a little bit more to think that it can soften up Pat, the wall and and for those tenants. I do like the the shared amenities, cause it does bring a few more. And having not lived, but been able to u utilize some of the things like Staples Center, you look, go down to some of those hotels in there and they have the raised areas. And they're well used and not only for the restaurants, but for the hotels and even those apartment buildings behind Staples Center. And I think that will bring a a big momentum to the to the projects, because you have more usable space. The only question and not so much, a big question. I I, you know, I understand the reasoning behind not wanting to erect the story poles again. But then we owe, and it'll be up to council, but just the conversation between everybody who lives here in Buellton, because the first thing they'll say, oh, we've just upgrown it and we're now going four stories. And I agree with the setback on that. It does not look like a four story building, but I think that would be a concern, but I agree with that change. And I hope with these changes that you have, they're all in the positive and going in the right direction. And I hope you were able to get the project on the ground for a change. Thank you. So with that, with our comments, do we wanna have a, any further discussion or go to a motion?
Irma wanted us to weigh in on a couple additional, the the actions that the council is gonna take, right? At the height or where was that? There was a slide with questions we should consider, right?
Yeah, well, I think many of the comments that you've made already address those items. And we, we are recording that, the meeting, we will summarize the comments and we will be passing those comments on in probably more detailed fashion than, you know, would be typical in minutes. I mean, these are gonna be more detailed and you certainly, you know, there's any additional comments you'd like to add. You you discussed the shared amenity issue, the live work use. You all commented on and the building height increase in the fourth floor. I mean, it's it's mainly things that affect the development plan itself. And some of them, you know, are, you know, cross the line a little bit with the incentive and the D O R terms, but even with that, is it appropriate to consider, you know, the incentive for additional heights? Is that an appropriate thing? So those type of things would be important, conceptually, you'd like to weigh in on those.
I did, I mean, I thought the six foot increase and I agree with the chair and that it doesn't look like a four story building. It's a pretty, visually, I think it'll be a pretty minimal change.
Yeah, I I mean, I just think that it's it's done because of the setbacks. And I know in previous discussions and all, what we talked on how to mitigate all that. And so I think you've done a good job on that. Marshall, any other comments or does someone have a?
No.
Need to make a motion.
I move to approve. That's right, read out the whole thing.
With the, with the requirement for the landscape bumper in the rear by the garage.
Then you make the proof.
Okay, I can do that.
Thank you.
So I will move to approve with the stipulation that there's a, at least a six foot?
I'd say eight.
Eight foot.
When you look at the top of the garage or the soul roof, you're splitting the difference. I, yeah, I just, when you look at what's over at the the townhomes, they're initially, we're looking for a six foot wall. We end up getting a ten foot wall. Makes a big difference.
Yeah, yeah, so.
It's in the height of the solar or the porch twelve feet?
They're, they're twelve feet, yeah. But then I think the parapet roof elements have extended a little bit beyond that, but it's the twelve feet and that's what the code, you know, the roofs is what the code requires that to be.
Will we have space for?
Five foot land.
There's a five, oh, sorry, there's a five foot.
The setback.
This required from the, from the property line.
Property line, property line?
Property line to the back of the structure with the garage. So you'll have a five foot strip that you can put plantings in. And so you're talking about landscape type material. It would soften that, be like a row, you know, a hedge row of some sort that would grow up and and soften then at the back of the garage. That's what.
I'm just concerned we don't have enough open space.
I think you'll be fine. And there's a lot of plants now, you, cause you, most of those you'll have to put root containers in anyway, so. That's the new standard.
Also, look at the original approval of all the carports. Or like this alert.
It's only on that back, that rear property, where the structure is, just what I was envisioning, but.
It's just something where those, yeah, the apartments are.
It coincides with exactly where those avenue heights apartments start, so. So are we thinking eight foot for the, just the stretch where the building is?
Yeah, it's the stretch for the building, but they're required to put landscape planting though. Anyways, but.
So does it already have a pay up for that?
Yes.
But that it's landscaped, but we're saying.
We're just saying to minimize the view from.
Like not grasses and three foot tall shrubs, but a little bit taller.
Yeah, so what they're showing, actually it's on page A twenty, the plans, they're showing the garage plate itself to be ten. And the parapet is at twelve, so it, you know, the the actual plate, roof plate will be ten, probably what you'll see from the back.
So ten foot would be fine.
And there's a, the landscapes, I can tell you.
You look at the trees.
You know, they're showing the strip of, you know, trees and, you know, tall skinned plants. I forget the, the, the formal name of those. Just kins, those tall juniper type plants that they help, they plant for hedge rows, I mean, yeah.
Oh, trellis.
I mean, I'm open to whatever, but it's.
Just something to soften it. Cause it's already required, so it's just making sure the height is what.
Yeah, so at least eight foot, soften the back of the wall, so.
Yeah, so I would make the motion with that stipulation for the eight foot along the stretch of the building on the rear property line.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call?
Sheriff Mercado.
Hi.
Vice Chair Reese.
Hi.
Commissioner Contreras.
I'm.
Commissioner Sarkia.
Hi.
Thank you. There is none right now. We'll go to item number three, resolution number twenty four dash zero six. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Buellton recommending approval of a development plan modification, twenty four D M O two to final development plan nineteen F D P dash zero one for the Creekside Village mixed use project located at four eighty Avenue of Flags on assessment parcel number one three seven dash one seven O dash zero seventy and making bindings in support of Irma.
Thank you, and Sheriff Mercado. And and thank you for the introduction. I'll just quickly go through the previous approvals on this. These were, it was a final development plan from the Planning Commission back in twenty twenty that was approved. It was, it was recommended to city council for approval. The city council did approve that and, you know, a month later, it included a modification for the building facade height setback deviation and D O R incentives for reduced parking and residential density. And and this Creekside project was actually the first one to come through under the specific plan and the D O R program. So and then following the city council's approval of the final development plan, then the development agreement was entered into. And that formalized the D O R incentives and benefits, which were agreed to as part of the project. Okay, so we've seen this slide a few times, so Creekside is the project on the right. And we'll see the more slides of this, but again, you can see the slight setback addition of the fourth floor. And I would add at this point that that fourth floor for this particular project is set back on all sides. So it's, yeah, they, it's a small footprint that the fourth floor has. So I, this this slide was in the prior project, but it might make more sense now. Look at it after we've discussed this a little bit. So and Brandon had mentioned the combined two projects. So we wanna look at the data on the on the right side and combined projects. So the two projects together will have a hundred and twelve units. I'm sorry, they, yes, it, they were approved for a hundred and twelve and they still will have a hundred and twelve units. It's just that now a total of seven of those units will be the the live work residential. Cause the five eighteen, when we just acted on, had four units. And now this has, Creekside has three units of live work. And the general commercial did, did decrease and we've, we've talked about that. The five eighteen had a somewhat of an inquiry, a decrease in the general commercial. This one, the Creekside project, probably had the largest decrease in in general commercial. It was approved for ten thousand, six hundred and seventy. And now we're looking at a thousand of general commercials for that. So the addition, with the addition of twenty six hundred in live work commercial, thirty seven hundred square feet of commercial for this particular project. So it does change the, you know, the the personality of the project somewhat, but it's still maintaining the opportunity for businesses along the frontage of Avenue of Flags. And that is what the vision is for the avenue. And the the decrease in general commercial was also what resulted in the decrease in the code requirement for parking. Cause general commercial has a higher parking ratio than live work commercial. So that's one of the differences, that you basically have the same people occupying the lip space as they would be working workspace. And so the the parking requirement is, they they've addressed, so they're, they're okay. They, with their parking. Um, they, with their parking, um. So Creekside, which is the one we're um considering now. In the blue column on the left, it just um, you can see the approved project. There was a three foot increase in the height at that point above the baseline. So the the Creekside project as approved was thirty eight feet. And that height increase was uh approved with a plan modification as part of the overall development plan action, because it was such a relatively small increase of three feet. Um, but now the project is coming back and requesting additional nine feet with the cum- cumulative increase of twelve feet. Um, so it doesn't, you know, that's a larger um amount of an increase than is a slight deviation deviation from a code. So it's one of the things to consider, um whether that would elevate this to a potential DOR incentive. Um, but on the other hand, um they received a DOR incentive for reduced parking, which now they don't need that particular incentive because they are fully parking um the project. So um those are some of the things that conceptually the planning commission may wish to comment on. Something that the council will also be taking a look at when they um consider the um DOR terms. And how that works out in the final at the end of the day. Okay, moving on, uh next slide. You just didn't hear, okay. The landscaping and the open space, that's right, okay, so um and this just shows the, you know, the the plan view, the site. Uh, it's a one point six four acre partial, so it's slightly larger than the five eighteen. Similarly, it's in the hundred year flood zone and it's subject to the same requirements as the other property as far as the Avenue Flag specific plan goes. So, next please. Oh, that's the one I was going to look at, yeah, so this talks about the, the um, I maybe want to focus on the, the open space and landscaping here. Um, so the Creekside project on the left again here is um they're providing and they're actually increasing the amount of open space that they're providing. Um, and even though there, the amount of private patio space is going down. They are now providing patios for every unit, which they didn't do before. And they are increasing the overall amount of open space that um is available to the residents. So that is a, you know, a net increase. And if you look at um over on the right side. Combining the two projects, there is a net increase in the amount of open space that's being provided. And um there's also moving down to the landscape um topic. There's also an increase in the amount of landscaping that's being provided overall. So by consolidating the building somewhat, you know, pulling in and pushing up slightly. It opened up the um site to be more workable for open space and landscaping, which is a um, which is an overall benefit to living in a, you know, a more dense um property. The next please. Oh, okay, let's go on. Okay. So this was very similar, same, same slide that we used for the five eighteen um. Yeah. Um, okay, so the approved entitlements included exceptions that would be affected by the changes. The, this project had a DOR incentive for residential density to allow thirty nine units per acre, a similar density as the five eighteen. Um, the density remains the same, the same amount of units. So this particular um DOR incentive does not change, it's the same. Uh, they received a DOR incentive for the reduced parking. Um, but now with the change of the way the land uses are aligning, um it reduced their parking demand, they are meeting the parking requirement. So this particular DOR term, one could argue, may not no longer be needed. And, you know, but they have already participated in the program, so um you know, we have the building height, which they received a modification before, which may now elevate to a potential DOR term, so, you know, those are the things, as I mentioned, the council may be taking a look at in terms of how to equalize that. Um, the building facade height setback modification that was approved. Um, the, the proposed addition, the height addition would actually result in more portions of the facades on both the third and the fourth floor are being set back than than previously. So they are setting back the facades and as we saw in the perspective view. The, the perception of that fourth floor addition just kind of blends in with the structure that they had before. Okay, next please. I think I've gone through this already, but I'll just repeat it very quickly. The items that affect the development agreement are the height, the nine foot height increase and change of use, the live work. Items affecting the development plan are the building reconfiguration. So this is a little bit of a different situation than in the five eighteen. What the approved project was, it consisted of a um parking garage that was underneath a podium deck structure that in essence formed the foundation for the building above. And I think what they found and in actually going through building plans and the constructability of something um of that nature is that's a very expensive type of construction because of um what the load that it carries and um, and I, I do recall that that particular garage, um enclosed garage structure also had some security issues that were discussed by council, I mean, by planning commission, when it came through the first time around. So um what they're proposing actually opens up the circulation and makes it a little bit more um user friendly and and has less of that um issue about defensible space and security. Um, and the revised building configuration, scrunching and moving up also reduced the frontage along Second Street somewhat. So it, it actually opened up the frontage there too and created more open space. Art Deco style preserved, um reduced building footprint, reduced total floor area. And similar change in the distribution of land uses and the amenities, which the biggest thing is the shared amenity concept, which we discussed and the, how the land uses are distributed. Next. Um, okay. You know, we can, if there's any questions on this particular slide, um we can focus on that. But the, we talked about that, this is just more detail of um what we had up before. Um, again, the live work on the ground floor, uh Avenue Flags frontage. Traditional commercial frontage with the same conditions, similar conditions that were discussed at length for the five eighteen. Um, no ground floor residential, um um the Avenue Flags frontage. Um, this does not have a situation where there's parking garage at the, at the rear that needs to be landscaped. So that's, we um will not need to deal with that. Um. We talked about the landscaping and the amenities already, so we can, we can move on. Parking, we talked about conceptually already, so I think this is, answer questions on that, this, if um commission has any questions. Um, one of the things that changed on this, and so if you recall, the five eighteen ended up reducing the number of driveways, they had two and they reduced it to one. This project actually added a second driveway um to make the uh circulation uh work more effectively in the rear. Um. I think that last comment is not correct on this one. Um, but one of the things that it did preserve is in the, in the rear. So this property backs up onto Zaka Creek and the, the trail, the multi-use trail runs back there. And that, the situation that they had, that they were approved for on, in the prior project has not changed. That, that area is going to be similarly treated. Okay, next please. We talked about this already, nine foot additional height increase. Though the issues to consider here again is, is the additional height consistent with the vision of the specific plan? And does the height increase warrant consideration as a DOR item? And the set height setbacks have improved actually o- over the um previously approved project. Okay, next. Um, similarly, on this project, the the civil, the applicant civil engineer has provided a letter that um the design of this project um would be in substantial conformance to the proposed grading and drainage design that um was approved previously. And the same, same requirements would apply, same standards would apply in terms of complying with um the floodplain ordinance and whatever FEMA maps are in place at the time of permit approvals is what they would have to design to. Next. Similar situation with the environmental, um project was addressed in the Avenue Flag specific plan that the project, the specific uses. Um, and there have been um no new environmental impacts um introduced. The project remains generally consistent um with the specific plan and would be in substantial conformance with the approved project. So it did not warrant any new environmental analyses. Similar to the five eighteen, there was a traffic study done for this project too, in order to have it qualify as a in, infill project. And because the density remains the same, commercial um square footage has been reduced. The impacts, uh traffic impacts would be somewhat less, so we did not see the need to reanalyze that um in order to determine that it's, it, it remains consistent. And similar situation with the story pole waiver, uh it applies to this project as well. It was requested at the same time in one request. Okay, next. And here we have the approved site plan, which is the ground floor of the building. Um, so the green units that are fronting the Avenue Flags and wraparound to Second Street were the commercial units um that were approved previously. And so on the ground floor, that's all that was on the ground floor at that time. And the parking garage, which is in the brown in the center. So that was a totally enclosed garage and the gray parking on the right was open parking. It backed up to the creek and the trail, um which I just mentioned. So let's go to the next slide, it shows the proposed site plan for the ground floor. Not that much different, but it's opened up. It's opened up, there's no longer that tuck under parking garage. There are um, I believe, ten spaces, regular parking spaces that have a small garage area. Um, kind of in the middle on the bottom, but the remainder of those spaces on the right, they're all exterior um outdoor spaces. And the building is built around the central courtyard. Um. The commercial uses again are along the Avenue Flags, the slight wraparound um to the Second Street frontage, but the business center now fronts on Second Street as well as does the gym. So the second through the fourth floors stack on top of that building, so maybe we can just quickly show um the second floor. Um, buildings, and again, the, the dark orange is a outdoor roof deck. Um, the third floor has private patios, doesn't have the roof deck. And I believe the fourth floor, we go on to the next slide, just have two large, larger roof decks. Um, and smaller, smaller footprint for the residential area. So um fourth floor actually has a lot of open space that's in the setback area and it's a roof deck. So it's a nice um feature. Okay. These are the um comparison of the west elevation, which is the Avenue Flags frontage. Um, approved on top, proposed on the bottom. They maintain the same vertical elements and the same window treatments and just have that fourth floor tucked back um on the top there. And um next slide please. So this is the um north elevation from um Second Street. And this is probably the biggest change to the, the front edge is the approved um project is on top. And proposed is on the bottom, so the building has been pulled back. Again, providing more open, open space in the back, so there would be parking. But it opens up the area that, you know, air and visual area uh view shed back that um to the properties to the east there. And again, the fourth story has been tucked back, setback uh from the street. You know, it um kind of blends in with the architecture. Next please. Um, it's just a, that's a cut through diagram of how the units would stack on top of each other. And that shows again the setbacks and um, yeah, okay. And we've seen this slide, so we can move on. There's just some more landscape detail in case anybody is interested, but here you can really see the courtyard in the middle. Um, and the pool area, there's a pool area in there, it just doesn't show it delineated, but that's where that would be. Um, and let's move on. There we go. Okay, again, um in recommending resolution number twenty four oh six. The Planning Commission would be recommending to city council that they approve the um development plan modification twenty four DPM O two. This would modify the previously approved development plan nineteen FDP O one. Um, again, modified project, modified conditions, some added conditions, very similar to what um we um just, I read in detail on the five eighteen. The only added condition that does not apply here is this does not have uh separate garage accessory structures added. Um, that's not an issue. And um same situation amendments to the development agreement that would come into play would be for building height and change of use. And we can go through the modified conditions if the um commission would like, I could, I can go through them again. Um, and the added conditions with this one, the live work uses are, these two conditions are, are the same as we discussed in the um five eighteen project. Okay, next please. Next, next slide, sorry. And that brings us to the recommendation um for the Planning Commission to adopt resolution number twenty four oh six.
Okay, thank you, Irma. Um, we could take a two minute break.
Sure, absolutely. Could minimize that kind of, there it comes out with a lot of new types of paints and everything too.
I know, I'm sure some of these colors reduce the heat. And I think that's might be one of them, but
Okay.
Just thinking about it, now that I'm looking at it.
Okay.
You know, have these two buildings in in the future and then this is one of our thoroughfares.
Yeah, and so I know that in our design guidelines, community design guidelines in general. Though we, in the specific plan as well, we call for articulation of facade walls so that we don't have large expanses of the sides, because that's where you really get the reflection. And one of the nice things about Art Deco is there's a lot of articulation and ornamentation. That does, that breaks up. So.
Okay.
Hopefully, that will. We can make a note of that.
Note of that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And then for clarification, so it was gonna be an underground parking and then it became above ground parking?
So the creekside was going to be a, so there was no under, like, there was no below grade parking.
Okay.
So this, on this creekside project, it was at grade, but what it was is was an enclosed parking garage, which is basically the ground floor of the building. And then that, in essence, a foundation sat on top of the podium deck that the the stories sat on, so the way that they have it designed with that small area of parking, with just a small, it's not a total load bearing area where the garage should be tucked underneath. For the, I think there's ten or twelve cars that are in there, but previously it was a totally enclosed garage, sort of parking structure.
And then, last question I had was for the live work area, so it was a, before when it was approved, it was all retail on the first floor and now.
Correct, general commercials. Yeah, it was a combination of the cafe restaurants and the general commercial, which mainly was retail.
Is there limitations to that live work? I mean, can I have, I don't know, just being just asking, can I have an ice cream parlor there and live there? I mean, there are limitations to the live work environment? Because I mean, I'm used to like coming from L A, this all the time, the art district. And I know there's certain limitations, do we have that or can any live work environment be there?
Because as long as it's allowed by the building code, I think is the overriding, but what we have stipulated is we'd like to see the pedestrian oriented businesses that that were envisioned as part of the specific plan. So that they would, you know, we wanted to activate our downtown area and drive pedestrians down there, and so that's the type of businesses, making a walkable street, a walkable downtown, so that's what we're looking for. But I think in this case, because this is, this is the new type of use that Gilton is going to have, and it is an emerging trend in the area, actually. So there, it'll be, there will be some experimentation on what's gonna work and what won't work.
So is this the first time Gilton's gonna have something like this here?
Strictly work, yeah, we have one project, the vintage walk project that is up further north on on the avenue. That is a type of live work, but they were, that project was more of a mixed use project. And some of the living areas on that were on yeah, not in the units themselves.
This will be its first of its kind where it's a
Yeah.
Dual.
Yeah.
First floor, okay. But we don't have any standardization in the city yet.
Not yet, yeah.
So this is gonna be a part of the test, a test.
Well, it's, we are, we're you know, the the specific plan itself was a, you know, forging new, new ground. Here, so.
But I've seen inside of Barrow, there's Kibo work, I think down there on State Street and there's different, and there's another one in the fun zone, so it's coming around inside of Barbara, but I just, I just want to make note that we are, we become specific of what we can and can't do.
Okay.
Where I understand it's, we're in this nuance that's happening, which is cool. But, I mean, I think we should be a little bit more specific on what can applies and live work and what can't, just so we don't have a, anyone come in and do whatever tie determine next to, I don't know, a cheesemaker, but still, you know. That was it.
Okay.
Oh, no, with the comments, thank you.
I don't have any questions, I do have comments.
I don't have any questions for Irma, so we'll open up to Brandon again, if you'd like to expand on this site.
Hello, yeah, do you mind pulling up the, yeah, the plans for this one? I won't make you pull up the modification, but I think if you go one more down, it shows the, yeah. So this project was the first project that was entitled here and there was some experimentation with that as well. I was very nervous about, I mean, having an over three or four story building, anything over thirty five feet was very new. So it also was economically, it was at the edge of being very expensive, but doable. But this really kind of triggered the change to have to get way more efficient to get this project built. We've reduced, I think, I'm not gonna make care to pull up the slide, but in the letter I sent, I put together my own table, kind of like Irma's and this project got reduced by forty percent of building area, so it used to be like eighty nine thousand square feet of like a jet, like gross floor area, and now it's fifty five thousand. So there, this project before was basically a giant parking lot with units on top. And we tried our best to make the area kind of open and walkable. But the new site, while it will be a little bit more of a traditional building, the addition of kind of a more focused, because I think the only, and if, on this area right here, there was gonna be maybe like, like a little bocce ball kind of court thing. Or like, or there's like a little area right here that was kind of a usable open space amenity. And then there was some roof decks that were in the corners, but they were kind of very small spaces and everything else was just focused on the private patios. And just kind of open lighting, but we were really struggling to find areas that worked. I think we really had to lean on the creek trail in the back as like our open space. So I'm actually a lot happier than in this new project, we can shave off a lot of costs while maintaining the same level of design, but actually I think a more functional building for the residents. I think one of the issues previously that we even brought up at planning commission and council was we really only had a few areas to enter, and if you had to park and then get your trash, if you were one of the middle the patios there, you would have to walk very far if your parking spot was like in the middle. It was a lot, it was a lot, like a big circulation walk around, so the new building is a lot more accessible, a lot more user friendly, and I think actually adds a lot more usable open space amenities for the residents. And I always wanted to pool in one of these projects, we just could never seem to find the land for it. So this was something that I was really happy about, although it does come with the extra height. But as Irma mentioned, and I don't know how this got approved, but we ended up getting like a twenty eight percent reduction in required parking. So we had to provide like a hundred and thirty six spaces on the previous project, because a lot of it was commercial. And for this one, we were able to fully park the project for its uses. So while we're asking for the increase in height, we also are now providing like twenty four percent more parking. It was a twenty one percent reduction in the required parking previously, and now it's a positive three percent. It was like one extra parking space that's required. So we feel that is a pretty good offset, and if you want to go back to the original site plan, more up. So again, it was, it was basically a giant concrete structure that spanned the whole building. But it was really driven by the specific plans restriction on having ground floor residential. And to be able to make it work back then, getting the density, we had to raise the building due to the flood zone. And actually, all of these commercial spaces and the five eighteen too, when we originally were going through it, we're gonna have to have floodgates. Because one of the things that the Avenue Heights projected in the back is that they raised their building, if you notice. But because Second Street and Avenue of the Flags happens to be like where the Avenue kind of comes to its lowest point, we were gonna have to raise the building by like four to six feet instead of only a few feet. So if we were not gonna do any flood proofing or anything else, and I don't know if anybody's been to like San Luis Obispo or some other places in their downtown and seeing kind of the floodgates, but they're not really pretty, they're kind of ugly. And they're supposed to like stop water coming in and destroying all the stuff on the commercial. But we never really liked it, it was just kind of a necessary evil that we were gonna deal with, because it was gonna be really ugly to have to have a six foot wall to get to the ground floor retail. So we kind of did the best we could. Well, unfortunately, it's taken a long time, but fortunately in that period FEMA has updated their seventy year old maps. And, you know, included new calculations, so actually, care, I, could you open the PDF? Because there, I actually do have a table in there, just, just to show everybody. Yeah, the letter, so if you go to like the last few pages. Sorry about that. Yeah, well, so this, yeah, I, this is the, for the creekside project, the proposed changes, how everything changed. So negative thirty eight percent, we were able to add a fifteen percent increase in open space to the project. Scroll down a little bit, more landscaping, we got more parking. We also added an extra, I think it was a eighty seven feet of extra setback from the creek. And if you go down, next page, that's the five eighteen, keep going. This was just an exhibit from the traffic study, so one of the things, just to talk about parking again is and for mixed use, we knew that like the retail wasn't gonna be open past six o'clock. But because the specific plan was very, very new, I think it was only like a year old at the time, or even if that, when these projects were being discussed with the city. They, there wasn't kind of a mixed use sharing parking reduction, so we had to park a hundred percent of the commercial as if it was its own project and a hundred percent of the residential, that's kind of one of the reasons we needed that incentive to make everything work. But as part of the traffic study we did, if you, we can't include any of the spaces that are off of our actual lot as parking. But as you can see, there's a lot of extra parking that's very easily accessible around the site. And the city just spent a lot of money building a new median that's a parking lot. So the whole point of Avenue of the Flags was that people would park along the avenue and they would walk to all these uses. So we felt that even without our on-street parking, there is more than ample parking on the street. But that is just something that we, so we don't have to worry about that now, because it's a hundred percent parked, but that was kind of part of our justification previously. If you go to the next one, it's actually, okay, so now, previously, we would, like the delta, people on the left side, so three to four feet for the four eighty and four feet for the five eighteen. Now with the new flood maps that are being approved and working with Rose, we were able to only have a delta of maybe like on the four, five eighteen, it's some, some is like half a foot in some areas. It's two feet in like the worst place, and it's like one to two feet on the four eighty. So we're able to actually kind of raise those areas and not make it look like maybe a little bit of ramp or a few steps. But we don't have any ugly floodgates and it'll still be kind of ground floor pedestrian friendly commercial. So that was a, a big thing that happened as well, and if you go back to the original, oh, the site plans, please. I also like ice cream, I thought of ice cream shop, I think that'd be a great use. I don't think that Gilton has too many restrictions on what you can do, but I envision that there's a lot, so not, as like a tangent, my mom goes to the like BB's, like hair cutter in San Ynez, who is like kind of in this old building, back in the, the behind kind of all, like the old Chumash stuff and everything. And it's a pretty cool space, but there's not a lot of new office, new commercial, new places for people to go. And anything that's old commercial is like what's over by like the Albertsons and though they kind of turn a lot and they're not that activated of spaces. So I kind of figured that if people wanted to start a new business, like solving, there's a lot of buildings, but they're very, very old. And it's, you know, you have a lot of uses that are spread out very far. So we figured that like somebody, like an ice cream, a coffee, if like somebody wanted to have an employee and have a wine tasting room or something there. We do intend for the commercial to be activated and along the avenue, and then we have the business center on the side. And then we have the business center on the side. And if you actually go back one more up to the previous. One of the things that again, kind of like we entitled this and then we were going to work through it. The process, but we gave a lot of attention to it for the modifications was, these are very deep commercial spaces that we had to have. Uh, to make the site work with the podium structure back then. But we just had no idea how we were really gonna fill them and we were gonna have to partition them like and divide them up. Uh, they were nice and deep, but it was one of those things where we had so much commercial on the project that. When I was going for financing or to, you know, get this project built. There was no value attributed, even though it was almost like 25, 30% of the project. So it was like. Waste, throwing money away. So I figured that, and we didn't know who was gonna lease it up at the time, because people were downsizing their commercial. And so we were, we really just wanted, I'd rather have the building be 100% leased and have less general commercial space than I would. Have all this extra commercial space that is just sitting there vacant. And that was kind of one of the things that we wanted to address as we did the modification. Um, so talk about the height, talked about, oh, and the height for 12 feet. Is kind of like one story. So I know it sounds like a lot, 12 feet a big number, but it is set back. Um, and it's basically just the equivalent of of one story. Another issue, which I kind of, if you go back to one more time to that site plan for the old one. And Shannon, you'll appreciate this. I had no idea how buyer approved this back then, because I don't know how they would reach any of the interior building spaces. We did get their approval, but that was always one thing that I was just dreading. If I ever had to get the building permits pulled for this project is how they would access any of the interior units. So fortunately now, that's a lot more feasible. Um, so I don't even know if that could have been built back then. So now we have a project that actually is fully functional and buildable, even if we got the sign offs at the time. Um, so and talked about circulation, trash nightmare, fire, floodgates. Um, oh, and then if you go down, or if you can see right here. The project also had almost no setback between the adjacent property. So if that property ever gets developed. It, the walls would have been within like a few feet of each other. But if you go down one more to the new one, we, we actually took care to set back the project a little bit further and have like a kind of a landscape buffer between. The adjacent property, so the buildings won't be uh, so tight. And that was something that we wanted to look at when we did the redesign as well. Um, and Daniel, to your point about the reflection, I agree with Irma that there's a lot of articulation in these projects. So it, it should break it up enough instead of being just safe, flat, white building. Um, but yeah, we're very happy with the the new design. The pool is my favorite amenity. And then if you keep going down. The roof decks on this project especially are very, very large. And even on the fourth story, so previously, and one more down. All right, uh, go back one more up. So previously, these two are, this was gonna be a roof deck right here, and that was the only. Roof deck amenity that was gonna be on the project, and it was very small, but it was the best we could do at the time. But now if you go to the fourth story, calm down. But now we have these two very expansive, like open space usable roof decks. So. Everybody was excited originally for this project, because they figured they could get wine and watch the parade or whatever on Avenue of Flags. But they would have been cramped into like a very small area. So now we have these two large viewing decks that, you know, we figured. Would complement the 518, but allow us with the fourth story. You, and you can see how far set setback it is on all sides from the adjacent property in the street. That we are allowed the addition of building these giant roof decks that can actually be usable. Um, keep going. I think besides that, this probably, this project has probably the most attention and changes to it. Um, the previous project was very art like detailed. And while I appreciate the artistic approach at the time, it was always a concern of mine. The financial ramifications of how detailed that was. So in our best attempt to simplify the design while keeping art deco. We kind of came to a middle ground compromise that I think everybody can be happy with. Um, but the whole point is to actually get these shovels in the ground and these projects up. And that's been a challenge for the last few years, but I finally have, you know, a partner that has the financial capability to actually get them built. And we have plans that are actually buildable. So we're very excited about that. And I'm available to answer any questions on this one.
Thank you, Brandon. Any questions for Dan?
Um, no, I I don't.
Marcelo?
Oh, I just want to comment. I like the new um, setup. The pool in the middle and especially the parking away from the uh. The um, the offices and the homes, residents. It just, just makes more sense the way you've got it now. Thank you.
No questions, just comments.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. Thank you, Brandon, for. Uh, bring it back to the. Commission, or any further comments? Yeah. Hmm, now I'll just echo back to my previous comments. Uh, I think it's gonna be. Hopefully it goes pushes all the way through and we get shovels in the ground. I think it's gonna be. A great element for our downtown thoroughfare. There's a lot of things coming to Beelton. People are paying attention. It's happening. So I'm very excited to see projects like this come across my commission and. You know, as stewards of of our specific plan, uh, just. Again, you know, I I'd like to see some consistency in some of these projects that are coming through. Uh, and I really value uh. The our, our client or like the applicant coming through with these two buildings and mimicking each other. So it's just a really good consistency, even though there's slight changes in there. Uh, between the two buildings, I really appreciate that. Again, uh, a like a bigger end design kind of. Bull's you on your sight lines and kind of uh. Makes you unrealize, realize to unrealize that there's a fourth floor on the back. I think they did a really good job. Think the nuances that they have here in regards to the art deco are really good. Um. Again, uh, I know that the live work concept is new to Beelton, and I'm, I'm really happy and eager that it's here. Uh, just want to make sure that we uh, put in. Either us or the council puts in some parameters just to make sure, you know, we stay consistent if that continues on as futures do. Marcelo?
No, no.
Uh, I I will say, I really liked the corner courtyard before. Bummed to lose it, but I like that you kept, you know, some dining out there and it's still gonna be lively. Um, let's see. Oh, uh, I echo my comments from the prior project about. Um, being in favor of the shared amenities and I have um. Generally, the the same comments on the condition for the live work. So. Um, as far as the leasing and phasing, I would still be in favor. Increased flexibility of like a full-time employee being able to live there. Um, or if. The tenant was interested in converting the whole space to 100% work, I would be okay with that. Um, and then generally, I think the language that's in the condition already about what uses are compatible, I think is adequate. Um, then there was just one minor thing that I noticed on the north elevation facade and. I think there's just a, just an issue with the rendering. Uh, I think. Maybe a slight issue with how it, the articulation, like there's some things that pop out when they shouldn't, but small stuff, just. To. Take a look at it in case some. You know, there's an opportunity to fix it before it goes to council. Thank you.
Alrighty, um, I agree with all the comments made here on the, with the commission. I think your changes are weighing the positive. And I, you know, yeah, we did lose the the one deck, but your the usable space. Uh, I think will help your tenants more, and I think that'll be a positive, because um. We were looking at, you know, trying to find, you know, people who just live there, just okay, you know, where's. Access to go outside, do this, do that. And so with having the. Individual patios, that'll make a big difference. And I love the landscape plan. Uh, your choices are good. Um, they're, they're colorful, they're especially they're beautist when they're mature. I, I know you're gonna go 24 inch boxes. But when they get mature, you know, this time of year, uh, they're blooming. And so even though. Follies are changing, you have some color and it'll be nice and bright on the Avenue of Flags. And so I think that's commendable. And so I look forward to just. Progress properly going, progressing and getting built. So I'll close that part of our. Comments, and if we have a, any further discussion or. So I'd like to make a motion.
I motion to approve resolution number 24 dash 06. I have to read the whole thing.
No, and you can say.
Resolution of the planning commission in the city of Beelton, California. Recommending approval of the development plan modifications. 24 dash DPM dash O2. To final development plan, 19 dash FDP dash O1. For the Creekside Village Mixed Use Project. Located at 480 Avenue of the Flags on the accessory parcel number. 137 dash 170 dash 070. And making findings and support thereof, but no modifications.
Second. We'll call.
Chair McCotto.
I.
Vice Chair Reese.
I.
Commissioner Contreras.
I.
Commissioner Sarkia.
I.
Perfect. Motion passes. Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you for all that.
Appreciate it. I don't think we have any written comments. Seen them. Do we have any planning commission comments?
I'm good.
Uh, just the election season is. It's starting and people voting time up to November 8. Seven, five, seven.
Six.
Six. So make sure and get out there and vote. That's it.
It maybe even somewhere in there.
And since Andrew's gone, there's no planning director. And we will adjourn this meeting at 8:31.
Thank you for your job, ladies and gentlemen.